A meeting with an opening karakia and I'll pass to councillor Rolleston to give us an opening karakia, thank you.
Thank you very much for that. I call for any apologies, obviously we've got councillor Schular online who unfortunately isn't feeling great today but he is not going to spread his bugs and he's online with us. Is there any other, no, any other apologies? I note that there will be a public forum for items 11.4 aquatic projects will be taken at 1pm tomorrow. As we progress this meeting through the week, we are scheduled to have meetings every day through to Thursday at this stage, depending on the time that we require and we'll go into Friday if required. But we do have some public speakers today and I would like to invite Neil Pollitt Ford to speak on the demographically sound survey conducted as part of the annual plan. Welcome Neil, you'll have five minutes to speak, including any time for questions if you want to leave some time for those and if you could just turn your microphone on before you chat, that'd be fantastic. Welcome Neil.
Cool, can you hear me? Yeah, thank you. Okay, thank you Mahi. I'm speaking today about the 25/26 annual plan and local waters done well, consultation with a specific reference to the democratically sound survey carried out in parallel. A survey the public knew not much about and may be surprised to see its effect on decision making. It was apparently decided by a council committee in late 24 to conduct the survey to support the submissions. It's concerning the results of this under the radar survey have now effectively been elevated to now equally influenced and watered down the legitimate feedback gain from about four times the number of residents by way of public submissions. The annual plan, read the annual plan, the report says that survey responses were more in approval than opposed with very opposite of the submitters. However, only 33% of the survey responses actually agreed, meaning 67% did not approve or could not say, with the largest response of all being could not say, so hardly a convincing result. But the survey report then goes on to single out young people aged 18 to 34 saying 63% favour the plan. It seems like someone is fishing for data out of the desired approval ratings. The approach is a bit concerning. The level of capital investment and costs, these were said to also be reversed by the survey data versus the official submissions. I'd also like to thank the council for efforts made to consult with residents over these important financial issues. The fact that nearly 1,000 people took the time to submit is to be applauded, more than double the number of those who apparently attended events. The response is higher than other public submissions which have been used to influence and justify decisions in the past. So, I personally don't recall any secondary surveys ever being used to run in tandem with previous submissions. There's a lot of information to digest in doing a submission, but key supporting data seem to be missing on water which was required to make a proper decision over a CCO. I feel this was somewhat biasing the outcome. There seems to be detailed figures and assumptions showing modelling of a CCO were not revealed to the councillors, let alone the public. The primary purpose of consultation is to inform people so they may be able to ask relevant questions and make up their own minds, rather than have them being made up in advance will be led to a desired outcome and by that I mean a CCO. The survey results have been compared directly to submissions of about four times the number of people and it will be likely be used to direct the decision-making of elected members on the annual plan when perhaps it may not be warranted. Were the 253 people who completed the survey in some way remunerated by researchers to encourage a response? How were they selected? Are they part of a regular group of survey respondents who agree to be surveyed for rewards? Do we know this? One councillor had told me that TCC claimed that residents' submissions would not be demographically sound hence the need for the survey, to somehow balance out the views of people who did make a real effort to respond. But it's the same, if you don't vote you don't have a say either, so submissions do count or should do. The sample size of a market research studies must be of an acceptable size and there is an industry standard of a 95% confidence level, where the margin of error is usually accepted with about 4%, but it seems this one has a margin of error of over 6% outside the accepted range, so should we be relying on this data? I also spoke last week to Kantar, one of the world's largest market research companies, and they said when interviewing a population of around 150,000 people that perhaps we should be talking to at least 500 people, not 250, to get a realistic result is the main point. If a planned review of user charges and fees is undertaken, as it seemed to be expected from these results, and it's designed to reduce TCC's reliance on rates, what guaranteed residents have that a proposed TCC user charges don't just increase the overall tax take rather than substitute one for the other and should be reducing rates? In summary, I don't believe the reasons given that council should be receiving a report that includes this, what I call spurious survey data, if it somehow influences important decisions to be made on topics submitters took time to engage on and may actually put them off submitting in the future if that's the case. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you Neil. Right on time.
Anyone have any questions?
Anyone have a quick question?
No.
No, thank you, thank you very much for your comments and now I'd like to invite Tim Maltby forward and Tim I believe will be talking around the waters entity and I'll let him have five minutes if you want to leave any time at the end for questions, that will be part of a five minutes, thank you.
Thank you Mr Mayor, councillors, I'm talking about local waters done well and the options for that. Now, one of the options, or two of the options, are to have a CCO, either a single CCO or a multiple CCO. Now, we're told that one of the advantages of a CCO is that we can have competent specialised board of governors, staff etc on the CCO and that definitely would be an advantage, so I'm all for that. I am concerned that it should be done on merit. If we're going to have a CCO, we should have a board based entirely on merit, not on any other ethnographic or political factors. So, that's something that hasn't been mentioned at all in the consultation, so if there are some plans to do that, I think that should go back to consultation so that the community has an opportunity to have a say and a voice on that. It hasn't been consulted, so we would like to be consulted, I mean if the council wants to do it, I think we should have a referendum. I think we should also have a referendum on unelected reps, unelected voting people on our committees, but that's, you know, that's my opinion. Anyway, Mr Mayor, that's me finished. Last time the mayor and I met, I was, I was in charge of the clock. Thank you.
Thank you for being very brief and concise, that's very good. Has anyone got any questions for Tim? Yeah councillor Schular.
Thank you Mayor Mahi, thank you Tim. So just in terms of the expertise around a potential CCO board table, how would you suggest that expertise might be different than the expertise that you might get around an elected members table?
Well, elected members are different to boards so that they are elected. You can select your board members and obviously if it's a water CCO, I would have a very heavy emphasis on people with technical experience on water, specifically on water. Water infrastructure, managing water and all the various aspects of it. So you do have the opportunity to select good people who understand water.
And as supplementary, do you think in terms of the number of CCOs that might be being established in New Zealand in the next couple of years, do you think there's that expertise available in New Zealand to be on these boards?
Probably not, because you're creating a demand, a new demand. You do have some very good water people on council at the moment, on your technical staff. Perhaps you should think about elevating them into management more or onto the boards or giving them more of a role, because they do, they've had years and years of experience with water and you can't substitute that experience with a management degree.
Thank you very much. Has anyone else got any questions for Tim? Thank you very much Tim.
Thank you Mr Mayor, thank you councillors.
Yep. I call for any late items, there is no late items, so therefore we'll move on. Any confidential business to be transferred to the open? I think we may have one item that may come in or we might deal with it as it comes. There will be several changes to the order of business over the next few days. 11.4 the aquatics projects report will be taken at 1pm tomorrow, that's Tuesday the 27th of May and after that we will look at the 11.3 spaces and places options paper, I believe, unless we get to do some of that today. And then item 11.5 is local waters done well will be taken at 11.30 on Wednesday the 28th of May. So, we will chop and change a little bit around the agenda as required. We don't have any confirmation of minutes, is there any declarations of conflict? Again, if you do get to a situation where you feel you are conflicted, please make me aware and we can, we can deal with it at that point. We don't have any deputations, presentations or petitions. So, we're going to start with 11.1 which is the annual plan 2025/2026 consultation and submission summary and I think Kayleigh and Jeremy will come forward to present to this. Thank you both Kayleigh and Jeremy.
Thank you Mr Mayor. Just before we get into the paper, just to remind you, a bit like I did the hearings, where we're at in the process here, clearly we've had the consultation process, you've had all the material in front of you for a little while, we had the hearings a couple of weeks ago and staff have been preparing a whole bunch of reports for this meeting. As the mayor said, it will be a little bit forwards and backwards in time, so as far as the agenda and if you can just, we'll work with the mayor to make sure we've got the right people in the room at the right time, so we don't end up sitting in a bit of a vacuum. Some things will come up which we cannot answer at the time. That piece of furniture in the corner is a whiteboard and we will write things on the whiteboard and then come back to it every morning tea, afternoon tea, lunchtime and try and knock things off as we go. Some things will sit up there for a couple of days while they get turned around within the business, some things might sit up there for half a day, but we'll use that to keep the meeting flowing rather than getting stuck on something which we haven't got the right people in the room to provide the answer for. As far as the consultation process goes, the public forum speaker is correct, you've got a lot of information in front of you. Submissions are not the only source of information you will use in making your decisions. You've had technical information, you've had financial information, you've got the demographic survey, you've got the submissions themselves, you've got the conversations you've had yourselves with people during the consultation process before that, on the hustings while you're being elected, all sorts of information goes into making a decision. So, any particular submission process isn't itself a referenda, the numbers may or may not be important to you, sometimes they are, sometimes they aren't, the weight of argument is always important and the substance rather than just the numbers. So, with that, we will now start this, this is the first paper on the agenda, is the only one which you're not required to make a decision on, so it's in some ways a soft beginning, but we'll see. Kayleigh will take you through, this is kind of two parts this paper, the first is the consultation process and then there's the summary of the summarisable bits of the consultation. Individual reports later on through your agenda will go into more depth on particular issues and what the submissions said, but this report is just an overview as to the general tenor of the submission process.
Kia ora koutou. I appreciate there is a lot to get through over the next few days and there'll be a separate lessons learnt workshop, so I will be as succinct as I can to summarise the approach here. In November last year, the Community Transparency and Engagement Committee gave direction to staff to implement an enhanced approach to comms and engagement with their combined annual plan and local water done well consultation. This was in line with the general direction of this council to promote more and more meaningful opportunities to connect with the community to help shape decision-making. The decision to promote as widely as possible was also taken because of the technical nature of one topic and the broad and less tangible content of the other, which could have made it difficult to motivate people to engage with the process. Digital, print, out of home and radio advertising were all used, as well as council's own channels including social media, news beat and the engagement webpages and the customer contact and engagement databases. Although we did have a higher budget, we kept the media advertising spend at 83k as at a certain point we reached market saturation and the extra spend just doesn't necessarily mean extra eyeballs. As has already been mentioned, we were also directed to employ an independent research company, which we don't ordinarily do, to reach those who would not usually be motivated to give feedback to council. Jeremy will speak more to those results as part of the wider theme analysis. Elected members had a very heavy schedule, attending 24 events across the city, mostly within a two-week period. We will be able to look more closely into what worked well and what can be improved, but despite the difficult topics and fairly low engagement events attendance, submission numbers compared to previous annual plans were high with 968 submissions received. We have not previously bundled two significant topics before, which is likely to have helped drive up numbers, as well as the use of the customer contact database, widespread marketing and the hard work of elected members to encourage submissions.
All right, thank you very much. Have we got any questions for Kayleigh or Jeremy? Councillor Taylor.
Thanks Tim, great report. One of our earlier people speaking at the forum was talking about the survey and cast dispersions on it, would you like to give us your opinion on how that went and why we did it?
So the reason we do the survey this time round was to make sure that we had feedback which was consistent with the census information about the makeup of the city. Submitters to any process are by definition themselves selecting and some processes over the years, and I've been here for quite a long time, can get captured by a particular issue or a group or a demographic. And in putting up our first paper to you back in November last year, the enhanced version of the submission process included that demographic survey to try and take that risk out. You'll see the survey results are different to the submission results, sometimes by not very much, sometimes by nothing at all, sometimes by a fair chunk. As mentioned earlier on, what you take from that is entirely up to you and if there are 10 of you around the table, there's probably 10 different takes as to how you look at that and that's entirely appropriate, that's the process. The numbers, we had, we did a expression of interest to a couple of known users in the, known users in the area, we came back with different ideas, the one which we went with had a panel which, they have people on their books, they use regularly for submission processes or for surveys generally. They're a multinational company with 70 million people on their books, all living in Tonga, but they have a wide scope and they do this all the time. The other option, we could have gone with is to take a survey company who would use the electoral roll, much as we do with the annual resident survey, and then they would pick out, to get 250, 300 responses, they'd probably would pick out 1,500 names from that, write to them and then that pickup would come through, that is more expensive. Taking your feedback over the first six months that you were here, we went with a more cost-effective approach. That ended up targeting about 300, I think we got 253 individual results through that process. We could have gone to a 600 with a margin of error of around about 4, 4.5% at the 95% confidence interval, we could have gone with 1,000 people and you bring that margin of error down to three something, we could go on to 2,000 and it's coming down, but eventually it becomes a conversation about value for money. And like Kayleigh said with the advertising spend, you get to a stage where the incremental benefits and the incremental costs, you can make a judgement, so we made a judgement.
Councillor Baker.
I think you may have just answered my question, Tim Akorua. It'd be good to know, probably more so for the reflection session, that we have the cost difference between the moderate versus enhanced approach and whether we feel like, from an organisational point of view in the outputs that the organisation did, as well as our opinions, whether or not an enhanced approach provides better value for money than the moderate approach spent?
Yeah, I think that is for that lessons learnt time, but we could definitely, I mean that, the ranges were in that original paper back in November and then the determination of value for money is a bit like the submissions, there's probably 10 different opinions as to what constitutes value for money, we'd love to hear them.
So just on our submitter, or sorry, one of our public forum speakers, were the panelists paid to partake in this?
The company says that there's a nominal contribution back to the people, so yeah, that's their business model, I guess they have to incentivise people to be on the panel and be involved. My understanding of those things from previous examples is that, you know, sometimes people will get phoned up and say, "Do you want to do one about XYZ, hand soap?", and they'll say yes or they'll say no, and sometimes they get involved and sometimes they won't.
Thank you. Councillor Schular.
Thank you and thank you for the report and I think, fair to say, this was learning for us and I also had quite similar questions to our speaker in public forum about that survey and I'm probably still sort of not sure, yes we signed it off, but I'm not sure we were as aware of it as we might be now, but just in terms of a couple of questions, consultation document, we, it was, we definitely, it was quite a rush to get it out, we had intended it to be 12 or 14 pages, I think it ended up being 32, we were, you know, they were provided of course at our 24 events, can you just tell me how many we printed and how many, because I know some of your team took them back from events when they weren't used, just for learnings, how many probably were taken?
Yeah, so with the consultation document, we have an approach where we will print some and then reprint more if we need them, so we're not kind of printing thousands and thousands and they're not using them. I think we started off with around 200 of the consultation documents. In terms of the total number that we were left with, I asked the team to keep a few just to hang on to for future years and future reference and because I'm a hoarder, but we were left with under 100 for both the two big consultation documents for local water done well and annual plan and the summary documents, so not too many, but we're, I guess we're constantly measuring to make sure that we're not printing too many, left with many, although I do note some councillors like to use the summary documents to kind of hand out to people and use it as a good hook to start those conversations.
Right, and second question, I, the, in terms of the $100 spend and I, you can be very critical because I think the idea came from me, when I went back to it and talked to a couple of people, they found it was quite hard and they sort of said, you know, it didn't, it needed a calculator to work out what you're going to put in other. We've read quite a lot from it, your professional view, did that, do you think we actually got some real numbers out of that or was it a little bit of a, something that was a bit, trying to be a bit creative but maybe wasn't as solid as we might need?
I'm not entirely sure whether we went into it looking for real numbers, I think it was framed right from early on about priorities. So for me, I would read that as far as where people's priorities are, which are the bigger columns, which are the smaller columns, which columns are more than was stated as status quo, you know, because it would appear that people had a view as to whether this should be more or less than what was printed as status quo and hands up, there was a mistake early on in the capex one, which didn't help, but I provided both those sets of data so that you can see whether that did make a difference. Again, there's probably 10 different interpretations as to what that means. So I don't think we were looking for a hard data, that next year the answer should be 31% goes on this and 26% should go on that, I think you should be looking at it as far as the balance between activities, what should be about the same, what should be a bit more, what should be a bit lower. It was simplistic, deliberately so, because, you know, we could have given everybody the total capex budget and the 400 line items and said, "What do you think?", and we would have got three replies. So this way you've at least engaged 700 people plus the people in the survey, possibly 1,000 people who have provided you with an indication as to what their priorities might be.
Councillor Rolleston.
Tim Akorua, do we have any indication what sort of response we got from Maori to these either or?
No, so this is, he was not asked for in the demographics, it's a nobody.
So, obviously you've been around for a while Jeremy, what's, what's, you know...
Don't say that to me.
I just really had a question, you know, around the feedback to this and specifically probably, you know, around, you know, what is your opinion on the annual plan? You know, what would a, a general, is there usually a sort of a steer as to people supporting it, against it? Is, you know, obviously we've heard this is, this is quite a big number of submissions, but is there a sort of steer that this is in line with what you'd expect or different or anything like that?
That's a pretty leading question for a Monday afternoon. Let's do the numbers first of all, just in context, because yes, we've got 968, that for an annual plan the year after an LTP is quite significant. So quite often, and obviously the change of governance is a different scenario to normal, normally the LTP goes out and it's the same governance body puts out the next annual plan. So the efforts of yourselves and the comms team have borne fruit, yes, a 968. Clearly, local water's done well as part of that, you're running two big issues side per side. Interesting for me that the email out that we did with the 45,000 people or whatever, there were more clicks on the annual plan than there were on local waters done well. It may simply be because that was further down the email and the people didn't get that far, or it may be that a lot of the noise about local waters done well over the last few years is not being reflected by the number of submissions, I don't know. So in the last five annual plans, the year after an LTP, two of them had big issues in them and had 1,000 submitters, including three years ago when Tumano Takio Tapa was a LTP amendment, that had 1,100 submitters in a first year after an LTP, but it was an LTP amendment as well, so you know, big spike stuff. The other three years, other three periods, 2013, 2016, 2019, 135 submissions, 287, 126. So, we've done well, you've done well in generating the community's interest in this process, some of it simply by being here, newly elected council, and some of it because of waters and some of it because of the efforts, difficult to attribute which to which. I'm not going to get drawn on whether the public think your annual plan's a good idea or a bad idea, you've got the data in here, you've got the feedback.
Sorry, it was more, it was more generally with this process, would an annual plan be supported or not? Is that, like over your, over the time, is, submitters, are they usually supportive or not or?
Editorial again now, so one of the things that we can quite often share is that for many people in life in general, it's easier to submit against something than to submit for something. It's easier to be, "That doesn't sound good, I'll tell them." A lot of people go, "That sounds good, they're under control, leave them alone." And that's not all 160,000 people in the city, but that's a theme which can come through. If you did want to compare the results of the demographically sound survey versus the self-select, there is a difference in some areas, so that may play into that narrative.
That's great. Councillor Schular.
Yeah, thanks Mayor, I think you've answered a couple more questions there, thanks Jeremy, but one of them was going to be sort of what, would you have an opinion on what could But one of them was going to be sort of what, would you have an opinion on what gives rise, rise to the difference between the survey and the submissions? But you, maybe you have a view on that? And the second question was, how time consuming was it for the survey? So, for example, I think we did three hundred, reached two fifty-three people, margin of error that we got. To get down to that, you know, if you were looking at six hundred people, how much more time and resource is that? Do you know?
So if we went, I mean, that was all contracted out. So we got a company called Snapshot to do that work for us. If we had pushed them to do a six hundred, for instance, some of their costs, so it's twenty-four thousand dollars roughly for that survey. Some of their costs are sunk as far as setting up the survey and doing the analysis at the end with the computers. I would have thought you could probably add fifty percent to that cost to make it up to the five hundred, six hundred area. So half of the costs would be sunk or fixed and half of the costs would be variable. So if you were looking at a six hundred survey, you're probably talking, let's call it thirty-five to forty thousand dollars. If you're talking a thousand survey, you're probably talking fifty to sixty thousand dollars. The first question, yeah, I believe I probably have answered that, that the self-select nature versus the more random. Now, people who are on a survey panel have clearly identified the fact that they're happy filling in surveys. So if you had submitters here at one end, which is purely self-select, in the middle you've got people who are on panels who are happy to do surveys. And at the far end you've got general public who would need to be approached through the electoral roll and sort of cold called. So the people on the panels are in the middle, but they are more random than the self-selects who clearly want to share their opinion because they've gone to the bother of making a submission.
And just one more if I can, mayor, so with that, if, you know, we've had, what, two fifty-three versus nine hundred and forty-six or whatever, like, is there any significance in the benefits of having the survey numbers higher? So you're dealing with similar, similar number of respondents or is it really come back to the margins of error and the, at the confidence levels? Even if you had, you know, six hundred versus nine hundred?
Yeah, I think that's something which each of the ten of you needs to weigh up in your minds. There is no way to create, or not that I'm aware of, to create a margin of error on self-select surveys, self-select submissions. Because a lot of people don't even give us their demographics, so we're not sure whether we have been captured. Whereas at least in the demographically sound survey, we got that information, so we can, or the survey company can weight it and make sure it's weighted to the census population. Eventually it comes back to that opening statement, which is you've got a lot of information, some of it's from the survey, some of it's from the submissions, some of it's from technical reports, some of it's from chats down the pub on a Friday night. Some of it's from what you bring and your own experiences in life to these decisions. You kind of need to draw on all of it.
Is there any other questions? Well, thank you very much and, you know, I really appreciate your, your answering our questions. I agree around the demographically, a demographically sound survey around that it gives us another piece of information. I think I disagree with our submitter that it's, it's to sway the results. As elected members, we have to take all information that we have, from out in the community, to doing our events, to listening to our submitters. To reading the submissions online as well as taking this as one piece of a puzzle. It's not, it's not the piece of the puzzle, it's a piece of a puzzle. And, and in making decisions as we go through the next few days, we have to take all that into account. And come up with what we believe is, is representative of our people and the best decisions ultimately for the city of Taronga. So that's our, our challenge going forward. councillor Schola.
Sorry, that prompted another question. So I understand staff went through all the submissions and that's where the statistics came from. Have you verified that with AI and can you just talk about how you use AI in a process where you are trying to report on nine hundred and seventy submissions, please?
Yeah, with mixed results, shall we say. So for instance, clearly the, the ticket box stuff in the submission online is easy, that just adds things up. It's the narrative comments that people add to that. So most of the questions we had, what do you think? And then tell us anything else you want to tell us. It's, it's that bit there which needs going through. Personal experience, I went through the user fees questions, answers. So the, the people said, should we be doing a user fees and charges review with a view to reducing rates in the long term? Chucked that into Copilot and asked it to just bring through the key themes, the key topics which were in there. It had a little hissy fit. So we went through and it started to pull out the first ones, you know, boat ramps and some other bits and pieces which came through quite quickly. And then it got itself caught in a community services, community services, community services, community services loop. And then it would refresh and go, community services, community services, community. So I gave it some time and eventually pressed abort because it wasn't really working very well, tried a different tack. It didn't really handle that massive information with a lack of a clear focus particularly well at all. So I did that one by hand, just sat there and read the whole lot with little notes here, and this is all about boat ramps and this one's about the libraries and this one, and built that up from there. In contrast, the questions around future capex spend, future opex spend, that sort of, that's the marbles questions. I was able, sorry, the, the future capex, future opex and the overall annual plan, I was able to split out from the spreadsheet, because all this comes through from the system in a big spreadsheet. Take the stuff on the spreadsheet for the people who had answered agree or strongly agree. Cut those ones out, chuck it into Word and then say, what are the themes from the people who agreed and strongly agreed? And that, it handled pretty well. When you put all the feedback from the people who agreed and the people who disagreed, it gets itself confused because there's no coherence of thought. The first one says, this is good, and the second one says, this is terrible, and the third one says, this is good, and it just doesn't compute. But if you go to, I did the goods, I'm sorry, the agree and strongly agrees, the disagree and strongly disagrees, and then the middles and the no opinions. It did a pretty good job there. And then I went back, you know, because by then I was quite familiar with the spreadsheet. And run your eye, and you kind of, you kind of know what is likely to be there. And then that was the first bit of reassurance and the second bit was actually going through it myself and going, yeah, it's not missed anything significant and it's got the right weighting on the major bits. So a pass mark, probably a six or seven out of ten for Copilot on that one, definitely not a ten out of ten, but it was a good start, saved a lot of work as well.
Right, there's no, councillor Crowther.
While you're mentioning that, did, did you use AI for the DCs part or was that just manual?
Can't answer that one, that was Ben. I suspect not. I mean, there was forty or fifty submissions on DCs. And some of them are very technical, which is, you know, that needs somebody like Ben to go through with a fine tooth comb.
I just, I noticed there's one standout thing where there's one person who, who had a view on the citywide DCs, but it was completely opposite. It was, it was the only one that was on its own. And so I checked it and he was actually complete, had completely the opposite view on the submission. So I just wondered if that was, I'm happy for human error, of course, because there's hundreds and hundreds of submissions, but it's, if it was AI, I think we should check maybe.
We can chat with Ben when we get to DCs, which should be later in the week.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that. Now we'll move on and I'm happy to move the motion that we accept this report. Have I got a seconda? Yep, councillor Baker, thank you. I just want to say thank you to all the staff for all the time and effort they've put into coming out. And, and one, going through all the meetings and, and allowing us to connect with the people. Then obviously receiving all the submissions, all the work they've done to collate this into a document that gives us a little bit of a summary. Obviously, thank you to elected members for all your work. Nine hundred plus submissions is, is a lot of reading. And I know we've been under the pump trying to, to read all this as well as, as some of the council reports for, for this week. So appreciate all your, your efforts in that. But also a, a big thank you to our, our people who have, have come out and engaged in this process and taken part. And we really appreciate both the submissions and coming and sharing your opinions at the hearing. So, you know, I think there's, you know, it's, it's probably when, on balance for me, it's very fifty-fifty. Around, you know, those that, that, you know, want rates to, to reduce and, and, you know, slow everything down as, as much as possible. Through to those that, that want to see the city continue to, to progress, continue to build the, the infrastructure we desperately need. And, you know, I guess Homaru is, is a great example of, you know, something that we haven't delivered, big community infrastructure for about ten years. And the last one being Mercury, the Mercury Arena. And, you know, within a week, we have a hundred percent usage at, at peak times, just shows some of that, that need for me of, of us to, to continuing to invest. So obviously this annual plan was around that balance. I think that we identified and probably have, have had that thrown back at us by the community that, that overall we are on the right track. That we need to keep progressing the city, but we need to keep rates as, as affordable as, as possible. So that's really the challenge that we're going to have over the, the next few days as, as we, we try to balance the expectations. Knowing that we are in a financially tough position, that it is tough out in, in the wider community. But we want to keep delivering and, and we want to keep getting that value for money. And, you know, I think that's, that's what we're going to have to be cognizant of over the next few days is, is if we add anything in, you know, what, what does that mean? Either for rates to go higher or for something that has to be replaced. But, you know, I think the, the general consensus around the table is, is we want to keep moving, moving forward. And, you know, what we'd love to see is, is actually starting to deliver these projects under budget. And if we can, can do that, then that allows us to do more. So that's that, that sort of more for less perspective or make a decision that, that we can, can reduce rates. So just, yeah, a big thank you to everyone involved and, and looking forward to the, the next few days as, as we get on and, and get into the, the details. And, and start to really get under the hood of, of what we're, what we're dealing with. And I'll talk about the, the financials at the next, the next report. Anyone else have anything to discuss? councillor Schola.
Thank you, Mayor Mahay. I think just, we've got quite a lot of learnings. I think we, it's important that we recognise that it was our first consultation on the annual plan, probably our first consultation. And I think the, I'm really impressed with the amount of effort that all of us, the time we put in. And I think in terms of the twenty-four events, there were a number that had six or seven or eight of us at them. So it was a, a really good way of sharing the load and hearing each other, and that was actually, that was important to us as well. Just to know how we shared our views with the local community or how our mayor shared it with Taronga. And those are, those are really good things to take in. I think the, I think we have to recognise, I didn't do a thorough, obviously, assessment of all the submissions, but I just did a sample of a hundred. And I did record what the comments were. And thirty percent said the number of staff coffee or staff perks. And I think that's something that's not quite recorded in the paper and it's something that I think we'd really need to work on. And I think there are a number of people who want progress, who want Homaru, who want the sports fields. But they just don't think it costs as much as it's, as they're having to pay in their rate. So it's a, I think we've, and I, I'm not sure we offered that option as a question. And I think we do next time need to go do the questions better, but I think in terms of, I enjoyed the process, I like the amount of information, it's fantastic. Nine hundred and seventy-eight people wanted to have a say and seventy-six verbal, and I think we need to keep that going. It would be actually interesting, I thought, to, over the month that we were doing that consultation, we also had quite a lot of other events. That might not have been annual plan consultation, but councillor Taylor might suggest he's probably doing three or four events a week and we're talking to people. So it's, I think, although we didn't have as many at our events as we might have, it's a, we definitely were connecting pretty well with, with the community. But I do think we need to, I, I was, I certainly heard stronger feedback perhaps than was in the report, that we do need to talk about how we spend our money. Rather than saying it's just, we've just got to cut doing things, it's, are we spending it well enough?
councillor Crowther.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to say thanks also to all the staff and particularly to Jeremy, who's twice, I think, responded on weekends to, yesterday to a typo in an email. So he's gone over and above. I think this was a successful consultation and I, I think the good thing is there are learnings that could make it more efficient and probably more cost effective. I particularly liked the, out of the ones that I went to, something like we did in Matau. And I'd like to take credit and say people came along to see me, but I think the fact that the mayor was there along with myself and the fact there was a good turnout of all my colleagues. Who could mingle afterwards, before and afterwards and, and answer questions, I think that's a really good format. So to have a presentation, but to have an opportunity for interaction as well. But certainly, and it's putting pressure on the mayor, of course, but if Mahay can be there, I think it adds to, to the attractiveness of people turning up. I think the survey for me was a learning. I, I don't really put a lot of emphasis on it. I think the mayor summed it up well in terms of it's, it's too close to the margin of error for, for the, all those questions. But it, it gave us another insight and I think next time I'd rather pay potentially a relatively small amount extra and get a more statistically significant sort of survey. Just do it a little bit, a little bit more comprehensively or, or decide not to for an annual plan, depending on what, what it is we're consulting on. This was different with waters. I do think, one of the things, I, I support what Mahay said, but I think the one thing I'd suggest is that nobody said to slow things down. And I think it's important we don't read too much into the responses. I think the deputy mayor was correct, people anecdotally are saying, certainly I can think in Bethlehem, Otamontai and Mount at various events. The, the common theme that I heard anecdotally was try to deliver a bit of a reduced scope. So when you have all these things that we all want to do in the city, we can actually do a bit more and get a bit more bang for buck. So don't do a massive great X, I won't name things because people have their favourite projects. But, you know, do a slightly smaller X and then you can squeeze in a Y and a Z as well. And I think that's a theme that is not saying slow down, it's saying do things more, more appropriate for the scope and the budget and the economic environment that we're operating in. And I think lastly, I'd just say that for me, my big takeout was the marble jar voting, sustainability and waste got number one. So I think Nick would join me in saying, at last, we've, we've got sustainability and waste where it should be. And that means we can put in a new transvestation in the next couple of years and, or, or get Malimi Street operating. You know, not Matau, no, Malimi Street would be fine.
Is there any other discussion? All right, if there's no other discussion, I'll put the motion up that we receive the report, annual plan twenty-five, twenty-six, consultation and submission summary. Ask all those in favour? Those against? That is carried, thank you. Now we move on to item eleven point two. This is the executive report twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six annual plan. And I welcome Paul, Catherine and Tracy to, to step us through this and then obviously to answer any questions.
Good afternoon, mayor and councillors. Before I go through the, before we go through the paper, I thought I'd just outline how we, we work through the finances as part of deliberations. So what the team will do is we'll track each decision as we move through the next four days. And report regularly back in terms of what that means from both a rating perspective, a debt perspective. And importantly, this year from a balanced budget perspective, which we'll cover off, off why that's become more and more important this year. That, that number is, it's approximate, it's not perfect, it has to go. Um, that, that number is, um, it's approximate, it's not perfect, it has to go through a, like a processing and a big system afterwards. Um, but it will give you an indication of where, um, the rates debt and balance budget is moving through the course of the next four days. Um, so in terms of the executive report to the annual plan, um, this report traditionally has been, um, working through any changes that have occurred since we published the draft plan, um, to where we are now. Um, in addition, this year we've included, uh, a section in the report which will cover, uh, the, the changes or proposed changes that, um, staff have continued to work on to bring our rate number down below ten percent. Um, so that's included within the report as well. So this, this effectively covers, um, options to get us down to a nine point nine percent, um, rate increase after growth. Um, it covers changes to the capital programme, which again has fallen slightly, or reduced slightly from when we went out in terms of the, the draft. Um, just touching quickly on the balanced budget because it is really important as we go through the next four days is, we're now very, very close, um, to that, um, that, that measure. So, um, the Department of Internal Affairs, which is adopted by the local government funding agency, requires us to have a one hundred percent balanced budget. Um, at this point in time, we're sitting at one hundred point oh seven percent. So there's less than four hundred thousand of, of movement in that, which is why we, um, will track that through the changes that we, we work through over the next, um, several days. Um, so that's in terms of an introduction, um, any, I'll pass over to any questions.
councillor Crowther.
Thank you, Paul. In terms of that balanced budget requirement, when was that introduced? Uh, was that a recent amendment to the regulation? Yep.
Yes, so the, the balanced budget has been, um, oh, it'd be five or six years at, at least that we've been pub, been it's published for, but it's become more relevant since we went for a besp, to the bespoke covenant with the local government funding agency. So we've been required to report it through our annual reports for, for quite some time. But as part of us moving to a bespoke covenant with the local government funding agency, they also require us to maintain that balanced budget requirement.
So it's, it's more the funding agency than the regulation itself that drives this level of, um, preciseness, if you call it that?
It, it, it certainly has more ramifications now than what it's, has had in the past. Um, but it is still something that's obviously pretty critical that we keep on top of and want to make sure that we stay in that balanced budget, um, position. Um, but the ramifications and implications are higher on it now where they've been.
I just had a, a question on the recommendations D. I just wanted to confirm that total revenue number is fi, uh, six thirty-six and not five thirty-six?
Yes, that's, that's total revenue including capital revenue, so operating revenue will be a lower number. Um, but with capital revenue it's six thirty-six.
Cool. I think, yeah, just to, to pick up on that balanced budget, uh, I do have a concern around how tight we are, um, to that. And can you just explain what are the, what are the key, um, parts to that that, that influence? You know, what, what sort of, yeah, what sort of costs are we, are we taking into account with that?
Um, yes, so it is, it is reconciling one of the appendices, but, um, the, the key things are, it includes adjustments for the, um, capitalisation of interest on development contributions. Um, it includes, it will include any unfunded depreciation, which in our case relates to NZTA, we're not, um, double counting with that. It'll include things like, um, software as a service in digital, which goes through our operational expenditure line. And importantly, at the moment, the Taurico West transaction is impacting quite a lot on, on the, on that, um, that balanced budget equation.
Can I just add, um, the prudent, uh, balanced budget does include capital subsidies. So that's where it has been different from that original balanced budget, that we, when we were sort of adding back and we'd have a, a shortfall of about fifty-nine million, so it's adding back in that capital. Um, that can be good, but it also leads to a lot more volatility because that will depend on the projects in that year and what's happening to those kind of inflows.
So any, any OpEx expense that doesn't have a corresponding rates increase is, is going to impact that?
Or a revenue increase of some sort, yes, that's right.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm going to try and be helpful, uh, given that constraint. Uh, in terms of recommendation B two, which is the hundred and fifty-six thousand to Bay venues, what's that as a proportion of their budget? It's about five million, that works it out at about three-ish percent roughly, doesn't it? What's, what's the Bay venues' operating budget?
It's more, it's more than that.
Um, including or excluding depreciation?
Seven, seven and a half million.
Seven and a half, okay. So that's, if it's seven and a half million, that's hundred and fifty-six K is about one point five percent, yeah. Um, this has come on to several agendas and I'm, I'm just wondering why. Uh, so the first time it came on, it was not approved by council and then it came back and, uh, now I'm seeing it again for potentially the fourth time, I think it's definitely the third time.
Um, what I, what I would say is that has already been taken into account in terms of about nine point nine percent. So it's not additional to that, so just, just for clarity, that is included within there. Reason for there is just showing is because, just, just for pure transparency, that it's an additional level of service.
I, I think, uh, just, just to, uh, probably answer that question, we had it initially and we pushed it forward to get more information. And then it was decided at that last meeting to then put it as part of the annual plan process. So that's, that's the last meeting, we didn't actually, uh, yeah, punt it. We, we just said, we'll, we'll, um, move it to the annual plan process, so that was my recollection anyway. Yes, councillor Skollet.
But just in that regard, we put it in the annual plan process, but it's not approved yet. So it just would, it, I, I felt it was an odd thing to have put in here. Um, thanks for the report and, um, lot, lots of, um, uh, lots to take in. Um, I just wonder why we've got H in, so we've got, yeah, H about the rate power assistance scheme because it notes that it's not in there, but there's an awful lot of other things that are not in there. So I'm just not, again, not sure why that made its way into the executive summary and, and into this report.
It was primarily for clarity because you, there was a workshop on it this week. So we just wanted to be clear where, that it was not within the material that we presented in the executive report.
Okay, um.
councillor Crowther.
Yeah, I had two, uh, questions. One is, um, it talks about the median, um, rate power numbers will be crunched once everything's decided. Is it still going to be the typical percentiles and can I put my bid in for the average rates for the residential, commercial and industrial, so we can do a city to city comparison? So is that, is that a, a possible goer?
So the, just in terms of the, um, the first part of the question is that, um, through the draft, we had the ten percent numbers. So obviously the nine point nine hasn't moved significantly from there, but we, we will continue to update those. Um, you know, the, the, the average number, um, we, we certainly can calculate. Um, we would still, um, as staff recommend the median will give you better information.
Of course, of course, yeah. Um, my other question was in the, on page, excuse me, uh, seventy-seven, um, there's the table there and under the operating revenue, it talks about a change from removal of marine precinct revenue. Um, is within the expenditure, when there's also corresponding changes in expenditure, is, does that include a reduction in the marine precinct expenditure in there?
Ye- yes, it's both revenue and expenditure.
Just thought I should check in case, I know you guys have been flat out, so I don't want to just check.
I just, um, in attachment one, uh, just a number of those variances don't correspond to the numbers. Just the, you know, it's, it's one or two kind of million out. Is that just a rounding? Can we just try to get those a bit tighter? Uh, sorry, um, page seventy-seven.
It's, it's just because it's rounded to millions, so you can end up with some significant, um, unders and overs. If you want us to round it to hundreds of thousands, we can do that.
Oh, yeah, we're just, probably just the variances because it's like, you know, when you, when you look at the, the numbers and, and it's a two million dollar swing and then you say it's a variance of one million. Um, you know, obviously the rounding is, yeah, something's, obviously, yeah, there's probably below and, and above, yeah. Have we got any other questions? Yeah, councillor Skollet.
So I just on, um, page seventy-five on the key financials, um, just those, um, the variance, um, LTP variance, a hundred and twenty-one million, is it, and the one below it, so total revenue including asset development revenue and capital subsidies. They're quite significant variances and I just, there's not, is there explanation that I missed? Or could you tell me why those variances are there?
Yes, so, so you're talking about against the LTP or against the other one? So LTP included the IFF, um, revenue, the grant revenue from Tamanua Taki, which was pulled out. So that would be a key factor and we can, we can provide you a, a table, happy to do that, uh, of that detail. Um, and the total revenue, uh, including asset revenue between the draft, I did make a note of those ones, um, thirty-two million. So in operational revenue, obviously it's seven million of rates, that's been reduced. And the capital and revenue, it's the, um, we revised down the DCs, we sort of had a review of how things were going there and revised down both DC's invested assets. Uh, and there was a capital subsidies, um, just a change in the funding around Tamanua Taki that, uh, that we looked at in the draft and we had identified capital subsidy that was, uh, not correct. So we pulled, we sort of moved that out, it's just going to come in later year.
And, and if I could just add on in terms of versus the LTP, um, as well as the IFF at Tamanua Taki, it was also NZTA revenue, that was a fairly significant amount of revenue that changed.
I'll just turn, you know, your mic, sorry.
Didn't think I'd turn it off. Um, so on capital subsidies, was that the other half of your explanation? I wasn't, so the hundred million against the LTP for capital subsidies?
So, so there are things that went in this, um, the one I read out, we're just, would have been the IFF for Tamanua Taki, changes in timing on the IFF, the other IFF that's in play and NZTA subsidy. So we have reported all those in the past, I guess it's how, how often we keep attaching them.
Well, no, it's just when they're, they're quite big, I'm quite happy when they're, they're much smaller, but they're quite significant variances, which would be good to include, please.
councillor Crowther.
Yeah, just briefly, um, just looking ahead to the next year, the six hundred and fourteen million capex, I, you know, to me that looks quite aspirational. Um, did, did you, um, just plonk a whole lot of stuff there as a placeholder, I presume? Is, is that why we've?
That's, that's correct, a lot of, well, not, um, it, 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 the base of it is the LTP, but there will be things that have moved out of the, um, the, the twenty-five, twenty-six year that will have been put into that until further conversation happens on those, those projects.
Right, councillor Morris.
Thank you. Uh, in reaching the nine point nine percent figure, have all of the savings required within the organisation been identified or is there some yet to be identified?
Through you, your worship, this, uh, we're anticipating savings. So while some have been realised, others are anticipated savings.
What's, what's the number that we're certain of and uncertain of or anticipating?
Uh, I think it's about fifty percent.
So the, on the, uh, the second appendix, um, to the paper will show you the targets remaining on reset two, which is two point eight million that, that, that is there. What I would say is that the amounts have been included within the budget. As the chief executive says, there's still ongoing work to actually develop the programmes to ensure that they are realised.
So I guess, uh, leading on to that, that two point eight million, uh, again, I, I'm not entirely comfortable approving a, uh, a target, uh, remaining, but from, from the, uh, organisation, how, uh, how confident are you of realising all of that, all of the savings, um, you know, understanding that it was about thirty-seven million, uh, from, from the two processes? Uh, and this is, this is the last ten million, uh, to, to find?
Uh, through you, your worship, look, I'm, I'm confident that we will achieve those. We're introducing a number of disciplines and controls into the organisation that haven't existed in the past and, uh, we're focusing on areas where we believe there is opportunity and we've, you know, we've heard, uh, the call to scrutinise and, uh, ensure that our scope and our management of consultants is, is tightened up. And so that's one particular area where we think we can achieve a large portion of these savings. Again, we're introducing gateways around our capital programme, purchasing controls, uh, and in, um, some cases we're centralising budgets. So again, there'll be greater, greater control and scrutiny over, over our operational spend.
councillor Morris.
Thank you. A request was made of Bay venues to make operational savings in response to the Tooronga City Council Organisation's, uh, savings. Has Bay venues, uh, responded to that request and if so, how much have they saved?
Uh, the answer is yes, and the seven percent savings has been factored into these budgets. Yeah, and, and that seven percent is over and above earlier savings that they, um, were required to make as part of, uh, I think their long-term plan process.
I'd definitely, Mayor.
Thank you, Mahay. And so, um, still to you, Marty, just in terms of the commentary that we, you've heard around the table um, and the, I guess the establishment of a working group having a look at the costs and how things are done. Um, we, I, I certainly am still hearing some projects that are OpEx projects that are, still have some nice to haves, um, still are probably doing more than we probably need to do. So can I ask for your confidence level that the message is getting through to the layers within the organisation that, um, you know, if we are, we are still needing to keep going and we are still needing to say, can we do this differently? Do we need that extra, um, something on a project? Um, how are you getting that message down to your people, please?
Uh, well, many, many of the staff are actually watching these meetings, so that's something that they would have heard regularly over the last nine months. Further to that, the process that we've been through to downsize the organisation by, um, by a hundred positions has had a significant impact on how people are viewing and approaching operational expenditure. Likewise, we're about to embark on another process of change, which will also, uh, result in, uh, a number of disestablished positions. Uh, over and above that, the discussions that we've been having and the controls that we either have implemented or about to implement will have a, um, a marked impact on people's ability to spend operational expenditure in a way that they have previously. In fact, um, you know, we, we've enabled the organisation historically to get on with a job um, and to advance it at pace. And so what, what I think you'll find is that there will be a slowdown process, um, and with these controls. Um, and with these controls, people will, won't have a choice other than to comply with these disciplines.
And I guess my question is, I'm, you're saying they will be slowed down in getting the money to do stuff that they want to do, rather than slowing down progress? Because we don't, we, I think there's a, a big difference between empowering your team to deliver but for less and making sure that it's done well. Um, and maybe with, with less consultants would be great, but it's, it's not about slowing down, we want to keep going, but we would just want to do it having thought about the process and made sure there aren't extra bits that are added on.
Yes, although I think what you'll find is that the capital programme and the, um, the delivery will slow to a certain degree. Um, it's, in fact, I think we've seen that happen over recent months in terms of, uh, I, I think the emphasis that we've put on, um, getting things right as opposed to getting things done quickly. There will be a natural slowdown, I think we're already feeling that and seeing that in the numbers.
Councillor Crowther.
Um, just a quick question about, um, the reduction in budgets for the climate action and investment plan of, um, point eight million. Um, what areas, um, have been not included in the OpEx budget for this year? No, the climate AIP.
There's probably a question for Nick.
If not, you can come back later if you haven't got it handy. Um, yeah, just.
Yeah, we can provide that detail.
Right, is there any other questions? Yeah, councillor Morris.
Thank you, thank you, Mia. Uh, I think it's a public interest question, I think we know the answer, but I think it's a public interest question. Uh, in terms of the personnel line, it, it shows that the number is higher than the LTP, um, but of course, we maybe, we're going through a process at the moment. Uh, why is that number higher than in the LTP? Is it to do with the, uh, eight million and the, what I referred to as ghost jobs, but I think there's a better, that was the commission's savings target, which was fanciful, I think to use a le- legal term.
There were certainly, there were savings targets that are reversed, but the main reason is city operations has come in-house, which wasn't included within there. So that, um, that was a corresponding reduction in contract costs.
All right. Um, just as a matter of process, um, as opposed to adopting these resolutions now, obviously changes are going to occur throughout the next two or three days, or four days as the case may be. And so I, I just wonder whether or not it wouldn't be wise just to receive this point, uh, receive this report at this point, subject to any changes and then revisit it at the end of the deliberations process. You read my mind, Marty, we're, uh, about to, about to go through that process, but no, that's all good. Um, but yeah, it just, just, uh, as, as long as questions are finished, uh, again, I'd, I'd just like to make a few comments. Firstly, thank you to our staff, uh, for this. Obviously, the last nine months, uh, we have, have come in and, and changed the landscape quite dramatically, uh, around, uh, how we view the world, um, the, the way that we want to account, uh, for things, uh, and, and made some, some pretty, uh, big demands on the organisation. Uh, and I would like to, to say thank you for the response so far. Uh, you know, to put this in, in context, uh, when, when we're looking, uh, down the barrel at a, at a twenty-plus, uh, percent, uh, rates increase, um, you know, just, just at the very start of this process. And we set a, a hard limit of twelve and a half percent rates rise, uh, which needed a twenty-nine million dollar saving to get us there. Uh, the organisation has found that. Uh, we also asked for a, an option for a nine point nine percent, uh, uh, average, uh, rates rise. And that has, has been responded to in this report, uh, taking us up to about a total of, of thirty-seven million dollars, um, in, in savings. So, look, in, in the space of nine months, I, I think that's quite impressive, uh, from, from the organisation to respond and to, to be able to deliver an option for that. Uh, obviously, as we go through the next few days, uh, we've got to decide whether, whether, uh, that is our priority or, or whether we want to bring in other projects and, and the implications of that. But we have an option now, uh, of, of having a nine point nine percent, um, overall rates rise, which, which I think is, um, you know, a big, a big credit, uh, to be able to find that without affecting levels of service. Uh, w- we are aware of some of the challenges that has given the organisation. Uh, it's, it's not a, it's, you know, thirty-seven million dollars out of a business is, uh, you know, around about eleven percent of, of the, uh, the expenses that we influence, uh, which is, which is around about that three hundred and fifty million. And, uh, it's, it's pretty impressive, uh, to be able to, to do that, uh, without losing any ser-, uh, levels of service. Uh, we are also aware, you know, that's, that's a hundred, uh, positions have been disestablished to, to enable us to do that. Uh, there's a current reset continuing, uh, which, you know, could, could result in, in further, uh, losses, uh, in, in positions. So, you know, I, I think it's, it, it is important, we've just got to be aware of that. Um, this is affecting the organisation, um, but we're asking a lot of the organisation and, and we want them to continue to deliver for our people. Uh, and we want, you know, we want to do things, uh, in a, in a way that, that delivers, um, you know, for Toorong and makes us the best city in, in the country. So, you know, just, just a, a, you know, a real thank you, because, you know, this is, this is a pretty big task and a lot of what we do here is going to, to make, uh, you know, an impact over future years, because these are, are savings that, that, uh, you know, a number of these, once we lock them in, um, they will continue to be savings, uh, for future years. And while I'm also aware nine point nine percent is still a, a large rates rise, uh, you know, we are delivering, uh, around half a billion dollars of, of capital, uh, infrastructure over the, the next twelve months, which, you know, is a, is a, uh, the biggest capital programme that, that we would have ever delivered. So, you know, it is that balance and, uh, and, you know, thank you to the team as well for, uh, getting us here. Um, I think, you know, in, in nine months, I think we can be pretty proud of, of, you know, what we've got, but this is very much the start of a journey. Uh, and, you know, we, we have plenty more to do, uh, including, um, you know, in the next few days as, as we go through all the submissions and some of the issues that have, have come out, uh, of that. Uh, so, um, yeah, I, I guess in light of that, there, there is a lot of decisions to be made, uh, which will, uh, impact this. And I think rather than, um, trying to, trying to second guess, uh, what, what we're going to get to, uh, it would be a, a good, um, thing to just let this report lie on the table. Uh, so I, I move to, uh, to allow this lie on the table. Um, and councillor Morris will second that. Um, and ask all those in favour? Those against? Uh, that is carried, so that will lie on the table until we've had a chance to consider some of the other, um, issues that we've got to, to deal with, uh, today. So now we, um, will move to eleven point five, uh, sorry, eleven point three, um, annual plan, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six deliberations, spaces and places, issues and options paper. Oh, sorry, um. Eighty-nine, that's page eighty-nine of the agenda. Well, we can, we can really do, you know, we're, we're, we've probably got an hour and a half, two hours, so we can. Okay, yeah. Yeah, I think, um, you know, what would be, I, I guess the, a bit of, little bit of direction is, you know, this is probably not, uh, making the final decisions on, on any of these. Uh, as we say, we've got a lot of, a lot of sort of balls in the air, um, but it's, it's an ability to go through each one, um, you know, decide the ones we want to progress with, um, the ones that, that, uh, you know, we, we're probably not going to go any further with, uh, give that direction. I think over the next few days, um, as I say, we probably won't approve anything today, um, but we'll sort of get that list and then we've got to have that juggle as to, um, you know, which ones go forward, which ones are conditional on circum- certain, uh, having money, et cetera, and, uh, which ones we're, we're going to park for now or, or maybe look at in the future, so. Yeah, so it's, yeah, so that's, that's probably, I think, the, the best way forward. As we try to get a consensus around the table as to where we're going.
Certainly, um, so, and thank you, thank you for your time. So, um, I think we've got eleven papers here on sports and, um, sports fields. I think we've heard quite clearly from submitters that, um, that are really looking for our support around, um, enhancement of sports fields, both indoor and outdoor. We can go through each one of those reports and then at the end, we've got a few, uh, I think three non-sports related papers, so we will come to those. So, um, I'm really happy if you would like to take each of the papers as read and ask the team questions. Are you happy with that approach?
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be great. Um, so we'll start with, uh, Blake Park, uh, for winter netball, uh, season and temporary toilets. Uh, so from my, do we know exactly how many toilets this is?
It's a toilet block.
I thought I'd seen three, but then I couldn't find that number again, but.
I think it's five, isn't it? Wasn't it, um, four female, one?
That's what they have currently.
Oh, that's existing. But I think it is three, two, but I can't see it in the report either.
Yeah, I, I think that was from memory from a submission. It was two plus one. And I, I guess my, uh, question around that is three toilets for six months seems expensive at twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, so that's based on the price that's been provided?
It's based on the price that's been provided by the club, based on what they've done in previous years. Um, I think it's also because there's an accessible toilet in there as well, so it's more expensive.
Do we know what a portaloos costs to buy?
No, especially one that's got a, um, disabled toilet in it. Um, I guess if you're, um, if you are supportive of, um, providing funding to the club, we would certainly ensure that we had a quote and we knew exactly what we were paying for before, before we issued the money. But yeah, the, the numbers are based on what the club have given us.
Sorry, councillor Corrigan, yeah.
Yeah, given the request, you certainly have my in principle support and maybe if we're here back later with some numbers before we make the final decision.
So would you like the numbers of?
I just, I think we're indicating in principle support, you certainly have mine.
Okay, but you, you want quite, you want detailed?
Just confirm the cost.
See if we can get a deal.
Just, just as a note, I presume it also includes servicing costs, so it's the cost of hiring the facility as well as the servicing and cleaning and emptying, but we can bring back a breakdown of the cost if that's helpful and find out what it costs to buy one.
I just, I just had a question around this. Um, obviously, you know, I understand that we have a, a duty as, as the council to provide, uh, toilets in, in, uh, you know, our, our reserves, et cetera. My, my question sort of relates to, you know, obviously, we provide enough toilets for Blake Park. Uh, however, you know, netball, um, bring in a, a huge number that, that effectively means that they need more toilets than, than are there. So I'm just, just trying to understand, you know, whether that should be a council cost or a, or a sport cost. Um, you know, it's kind of the, the cost of, of running netball, um, you know, as, as a sport.
I don't think there is a, um, they're all looking at me.
Historically, it's been council's responsibility to provide public toilets on sport and recreation facilities. Obviously, with the growth of the sport, it's outstrip the amenities. In the normal course of business, it would be council, but I understand what you're saying, it's the success and growth of the sport has created greater demand. It's whether or not council wants to continue to provide that service.
I guess if I look at it, you know, if, if I ran an event at the, um, Toorong and Domain, uh, I would expect to, to bring in toilets to service that event, because, you know, I'm not expecting council to provide toilets for my ten thousand people that I bring in, you know, to, to the event. I, I, I'm just, so it's a question, you know, for the council as to how we view this. So councillor Schula.
Yeah, thanks, Mia. Just looking at the submission, what they're after, the twenty thousand dollars through everyone's information is five portaloos toilets and one of those will be accessible. So that's what the twenty thousand covers by the looks.
I think it's, um, you're correct, Mia, it's, it's, I mean, it's a discretionary, it's a decision for you to make. We, we've provided a minimum amount of toilets on the field, uh, the sport's growing, it's not enough to meet the current demand, um, until something happens. It's, it's, it's discretionary, it's totally up to you.
Councillor Crowther. Oh, sorry, I think, uh, councillor Baker might be in, councillor Baker might be in front.
But if it's in the same line, I'll, I'll wait, my question can come.
I was just going to say, um, my recollection of the submission was the reason they were asking for the support was because the council's decision or lack of, um, has meant that they're incurring unexpected costs because they were counting on a particular plan. And so to me, that's got to be factored in. I do agree with the view that we hopefully will get them cheaper and that might make it less of a contentious issue anyway, but I, I think there is, there is some different, you know, situation here compared to if it was just out of the blue, someone coming along wanting some extra toilets.
Yeah, I, I guess, you know, the, the contrary to that is, um, you know, the, the reason that they haven't invested in the facility is they don't know they're staying there long-term, potentially moving. But if they, if they stayed there, they, they would be investing money to build more toilets, so.
The argument they had was if we spend our money here, then, you know, it goes, goes somewhere where we might only be there for another couple of years, whatever the argument is.
Permission to speak, gay? No, no, I'm kidding.
Councillor Baker.
Thank you. Um, I was going to make a similar point, but my question is, um, who funds Ames Games or do we provide a contribution to that event? And if so, could we look at potentially allocating some funds from that now early, considering there's going to be portaloos there come Ames Games week?
I will, yes, we do contribute to Ames, Ames Games, we give them a grant from our, um, our events funding. It's in September, so I, yeah, it is, it is a way away. I wouldn't like to reduce the, the commitment of funds that we would give to the Ames Game and, and it's not until September, September.
All right, any other questions? All right, then, uh, in principle support, are we, uh, are we moving this as, as supporting this? Okay, so we've, we've got in principle support, I think we've got the numbers, so, um, this one will go forward as, as a, as a possible. Yeah, so we'll get some more quotes. Okay, next issue is Mount Manganui Cricket Club proposed pavilion and changing rooms. Do we have any idea, you know, because we're, we're talking here about 73,000 and then leasing back, is under the current, the current club rooms they've got, are we, what sort of return are we getting on that? So a nominal amount?
So the, the existing facility that they've got there, they built themselves. So we just have a land lease with them for that relatively small space. But the model that we're proposing here is that we build it this time and then they would lease it off us. So that would be at the higher building community lease rate rather than the land lease rate.
Do we have any idea as, you know, are we getting a return on 73,000, are we?
It wouldn't be a large sum of money. The, our building lease rates are $25 a square metre. I think it's like a nine by three metre times two. So 18 times three times 25, whatever that number is. $1,200?
Not very much.
All right. And have we investigated Bay Oval? Obviously, they've got very nice changing rooms, et cetera. And, yeah, just interested if we've investigated, you know, that it's not used very much, whether that could be an option?
We haven't investigated that specifically predominantly because the purposes of this is for the club to have changing rooms next to where their club rooms are. So it's in the middle of their fields where they play on rather than 150 metres away. And it's to enable the people that are playing to keep their gear close to where they're playing, be around the club rooms and be in the right places in the park. So it's obviously the club's desire to have it close to where they're playing.
Councillor Correct.
Okay, Alison, other than that aspect, do you see any other sort of operational issues that the Bay Oval could claim that would be, could make difficult accommodating the club? Do you think that's a viable option if the cricket club members were happy to walk the 150 metres? Do you think that would be an option to investigate?
I think it's worth exploring. I guess from an officer's point of view, it felt like this was a really pragmatic way to give the club the club rooms that they've been waiting for for 10 years since they were removed 10 years ago. So rather than coming and asking for a pavilion or a bigger building, it feels like we've come up with a really practical response that's cheaper than what we would normally ask, get asked for. So from an officer's point of view, we're supportive of that. But on saying that, if the council wants us to talk to the Bay Oval, then we can certainly do that.
It's me. A couple of things on this, I noticed they're also looking for part of the money for portaloos. Is there any potential crossover here with the previous item? Their two grounds are side by side. Could there be some sharing, I suppose, different seasons?
Different seasons, so potentially it could go from one side to the other and maybe a better rate if we're doing it both together. Cricket, just have the one there next to the.
Thinking sideways. And the second thing I had was, in your disadvantages here, it talks about removing a tree, which I don't really like the sound of that. Do we know what that's about?
So at the moment, where the club rooms are, there's trees on either side. So we've been working with the club to make sure that we can limit as much as possible. And we've redone the design with the club that keeps the trees as much as we can in situ. But there may be one that would need to be removed, but then we'd look at what mitigation that we need to do around that.
Right, any other questions? Any discussion? Councillor Crowther.
Yeah, I, I go along with what Alison was saying, like they've waited for a decade. There's been so many times, as far as I know, that they've come back to council, I, I know a few times. And it's just one of those things that, you know, if we boot it out again, it'll just be for a relatively small amount of money. And the fact that they will maintain, I think that's the key part, we don't have an opaque implication of this. So to me, that's the question of how to make it the most efficient, how to, you know, get the best bang for buck out of it. But other than that, I think in terms of in principle, I think this, this, you know, we should just do it. And I don't think it'll work at Bay Oval, I think it's just impractical because as the submitter said, you know, you don't want to walk all the way, was it 150 metres each way? Meanwhile, someone might go out and you haven't got your gear on in time. So, you know, I think there's a practicality around it.
Councillor Schuller.
I tend to agree, I think from a sport facility perspective, it's a, a reasonable spend for something that they do need. I think it's a, I think the only thing that, it does worry me a little bit that they didn't, they actually acknowledged that they hadn't spoken to Bay Oval because, because of, I think, previous issues with speaking to Bay Oval, which we've got to start saying, well, let's do it anyway. And I think it, even if they'd come with this submission and said, we've spoken and yes, if we ever have a big event, we can share their facilities, but we still need our own next to the field. They did describe how they changed between matches on this uncovered pavilion. So again, I'm supportive of sport facilities. I think it's a, this seems to be a, a cost for a sports facility that seems reasonable. So for me, it would be, let's advance this one forward as well.
Yeah, I think overall, like I'm very supportive of, of sports and, and, you know, helping, helping clubs. I guess it does come into the argument of, you know, what, what our job as, as council is. You know, whether it is delivering for, for sports clubs or not. You know, that's, there's a, there's a whole lot of, you know, very deserving causes right throughout today. And, and, you know, we just don't have an endless, endless pit to, to spend. I, I think probably, you know, the fact that, that the influence that Tauranga City Council has had on, on these people, then, you know, it probably, probably is worth supporting. But yeah, we're, we're just, just going to have to be very aware of, of the money that we're spending and what, what that, that gets us, I guess, you know, and who that, who that is, is supporting. Because, you know, every, every case, I think, has, has got a, a good argument for it. Councillor Schuller.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, we sort of agree with the comments so far. You know, we have consequence of, you know, the council's choices in the past to move them into the, I suppose, a temporary situation. And the thing about this spend as well, while it is money that we have to find, it is our asset in the future, there may be, I mean, if we're lucky enough or things work out that they get moved to another place soon or a permanent home, that we still have an asset that situations like this could arise in the future. So we do still have two changing sheds which can be applied. So yeah, I suppose in a way, it's, it's not a dead loss of money, it's creating a, a bit of a port of asset in a way.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, so are we going to progress this one forward? I'm going to. Support. Yeah, okay, so we're, in principle, we've, we've got support. So that will go on to the discussions later. So the next one is, is the Papamoa Tennis Club Multi-Use Community Sports Hub at Gordon Sprat Reserve. So I guess my question straight off is, is, you know, they're, they're talking about feasibility studies and business cases. So my question for staff is, is there a need at Gordon Sprat or in the Papamoa region for such a facility?
Well, I think our, our provisional view is probably. But more work needs to happen to really define what that need is. The extent to which not just the tennis club could make use of that facility, but those other racket sports and other non-racket sports could make use of that facility. So we think there's a little bit more work to do with the Papamoa Tennis representatives to refine and define that a little bit better. And then obviously to work through the concept and, I guess, the overall operating model there with them so that there is an investable proposition there potentially. And that we look to set them up or work with them to set themselves up in a way that is financially sustainable for the long term, essentially to determine if there's an investable proposition there. But I think our general inclination is that it warrants further investigation and that's what we should be doing now.
And what's, what's the sort of indicative cost of, you know, feasibility studies and business cases, et cetera?
So we would look to do the, the majority of that in-house. As in, our team working with them to work through those things, to talk to the various other stakeholders, to, to build an initial picture. It might be that at some point, we think there's value in a, a, an independent review of that. That tends to be the preferred way forwards for non-council funders. So if this thing becomes an investable proposition that council, you know, the likes of TACTT, Lotteries or others, are going to consider, they generally want to see a reasonably robust process having been gone through with some independence to it. So we would look to do as much as we can to get to a certain point before then considering whether there's value in some independent input to that that we could potentially pay for from existing budgets.
Yeah, councillor Correct.
About what would that be in your head in terms of a, sort of a budget for a consultant?
Twenty to thirty, yeah. This is probably not specific to this particular case, but obviously we've got a couple of other proposals coming up that talk about feasibility studies and that sort of thing. How far do you think we go into these things before people get really excited that it's going to happen? Like, this one's obviously at very early days. Council has a lot of in-house knowledge about it, we can do a lot of that preliminary work. Here, how, how do we get it to a point where we have to make the decision? But these early stages, not getting people to set that it's actually going to happen for them immediately. Do you get my, my drift there?
I think typically by the time it becomes a thing that council's aware of, they're already excited about it. But we manage expectations as far as what the process is, this needs to be these robust steps. It comes back to council for decision. I think as a team, we're really good at managing those expectations. But also, we don't want to put them off wanting to keep doing it either. So there's that balance of being enabling but managing expectation.
Thanks, supplementary on that one. So probably goes to the next question is, using in-house team to do this. Obviously, we've been talking earlier on about reductions in staffing and resource being stretched. Are we going to get through a few of these? Like, are we adding too much onto your plate as a sort of a question on that one?
There's no other time I can ask, but I, I think we just have to make sure that we prioritize it right and we're doing it in the order that's come on. And some of them like Arataki, we already, we've already done the development plan and we understand a bit more what's there. So I feel as long as there's realistic expectations around timing and really our aim is to have something to come back through LTP, we're reasonably confident that we can get far enough to bring good information back to LTP. Working with the clubs, yeah.
Yeah, through, through you, your worship. I think Ross has alluded to the fact that we're, we're happy and capable to work with community groups and clubs up to a certain point. And then, once a concept is reasonably well developed, external funders who are interested arguably, because that's how a lot of these facilities are funded, either by card, code, club, community and council coming together. Generally, there would be either an independent review or an assessment, needs assessment, which gives the independent funders confidence that actually it's good value, particularly if we've got multi-purpose and use facilities. And so from a staff perspective, we, we can work with as many of these as we possibly can to a point where that funding equation comes into place at that point. Others are expecting a wee bit more than just councils, it feels right. Exactly, TACTT have a, have a long track record of supporting these types of assessments.
Yeah, councillor Correct. Sorry, you go, you've, you've got the mic.
No, I was just going to say, good question, great clarity, happy to support because it's no financial impact, so hoping to move on.
Councillor Correct.
So if, if we put a number in the budget, is it possible that, that could be retrospectively refunded via a funder to incorporate that into the grant? Is that ever done? No, they don't, they only look at the.
Typically, they won't fund retrospectively.
Yeah, I think I agree councillor Baker around, around no budget. I think the important thing is, is in, in light of, you know, councillor Taylor's comments is, is we, we don't want to progress any of these unless we are, you know, we are serious about looking at it in the future because otherwise we set expectations. And I think we've seen a lot of work done in this organisation which has gone nowhere. And so I think we just have to be aware of that and make sure that we, we don't set an expectation that's unrealistic because we're never going to fund it. You know, we, we have to, we have to be prepared that if we're going to say, yes, we're going to look at it, that, that we do have a, you know, support going forward. And I guess with this one, you know, we've, we've also had a, a group from Pickleball, you know, wanting land to, to be building a very similar thing. So this is an opportunity, I guess, that, that you get them together. Look, I, I think just a general comment to these, these organisations is, yes, look, we want to build things. But if you can, if you can come and, and contribute to them financially, you know, they're going to be much, much easier to support from, from our perspective. So, you know, that's probably the, the challenge. But yeah, I, I do agree, I think, you know, everything I hear, there's, there's a huge demand and for, for all sorts of facilities and, and, you know, if we can enable those, that's a, a positive. So, you know, I am supportive in, in going down this, this road. Yeah, it's just at the moment, the, the ask is, so yeah, councillor Roseboom.
Uh, thanks, Mayor, mine's, having sat through their presentation, which was very, very well put together, I think part of their initial request was just for us to say, yes, we support the concept and yes, we support that space and we're quite happy to work with you just to sort of ring fence the area that you're going to require for the time being. So they know they can push forward with their own request or search for independent funders to support them on the process. I think all they're really after is us to give them the support to say, yes, we support your plans and we're happy to allocate the space for you to put your covered courts in. Is that, has my, got the understanding correct?
So, yeah, I think if we just, I'm just going to put the recommendation up because I think this is one that we might be able to deal with and move on. Obviously, there's not a, a financial impact apart from an internal staff, so we'll just get that. I think we can, yeah, we can discuss those individually, but just for this one, so this is actually D. Okay. Yeah, so, okay, councillor Morris. Councillor Roseboom will second that, thank you. All those in favour? Those against? That one's carried, thank you. Actually, we might have, we'll do one more and then we'll have a break. So now we move on to Papua Ma rugby facility and potential relocation. Have we got any questions on this one? Councillor Taylor?
So this one sort of has two parts to it, one's very similar to the last one. The second part of it is the relocation further out to PEI land. Maybe we can break this into two, perhaps the supporting the Gordon Sprat discussion first would be my take and then obviously we have to, as a council, decide what we see that land being used for. So, yeah, I think breaking it in half might be useful, do you agree with?
Yeah, councillor Morris.
Yeah, thanks, if it's helpful to that, the resolution, proposed resolution just is acknowledging their interest in relocation, but, yeah, we should do that later, yeah.
So I guess I've got a couple of questions here. Firstly, you know, because they're talking about having a relocatable clubroom facility and I know we've already discussed some of the options there at Gordon Sprat. So my, it's a two-part question. Firstly, around the relocatable, I'm just thinking if we were to build a clubroom facility on the site that they're on, if they were to move, would that be useful to other sports?
At this stage, probably not, unless something else moved in, if rugby moved out. But the point of moving rugby out is to create space for other people to grow. So at this stage, not, but I think we would explore that before we went ahead, having relocatable just makes it more flexible and seems to make sense if the intention is to move rugby from Gordon Sprat at some stage.
Sorry, just to add to that, so...
Oh, sorry, hear me, I think.
At the moment, sorry, at the moment, we'd be anticipating probably that the summer user of that facility would be touch rugby. And if rugby were to relocate to another site, we'd probably envisage the touch rugby going there as well. So I think we'd probably have questions as to whether that facility would still be useful at Gordon Sprat or, as per our current thinking, it might be better if it were relocated to the PEI land if that were the outcome that came to fruition.
So those fields though, what if, like, let's say they went, would that be used for football or something? And what you're saying is we don't need a second clubroom there if it was used for football?
So the current plan with Gordon Sprat is to build the two different clubrooms, so one for football and one for rugby. So if rugby went, there'd still be that additional pavilion that's in the pipeline for next year at the moment.
But it'd be quite removed from...
From that side, yes, but the fields would just go to be football and other uses at this stage, depending on...
Yeah, yeah, okay, no, that's...
Couple of questions. Sport Bay Plenty, where are they in these conversations? And obviously they submitted and we've heard a number of them in making sure that we're involving them in the strategic conversations. And the second question is, if I recall correctly, the submitter said Naaportaki were supportive. There's a piece of land that's come back. I guess I want to make sure we've doubled back and made clear that they're supportive of what's happening with their finoa. So two questions, one on Sport Bay Plenty and second one on the iwi.
So as far as Sport Bay Plenty go, where in regular dialogue with them, with what's happening across the city as a whole? And we have regular check-ins, so they're aware of what's happening at Gordon Sprat and they need to do more there to cater for all the users. And that's ongoing dialogue with them. As far as Naaportaki goes, I don't think we've talked to them specifically about these two. We've still been working with the clubs around what would be suitable for them, but absolutely Naaportaki would be part of the conversation before we progress to the next stage.
Yeah, just to add to that, there was dialogue with Naaportaki as we put together the overall master plan, that we call it, for Gordon Sprat reserve with additional facilities, reconfigured fields, et cetera. So there has been some dialogue. I'm not sure how recent that dialogue has been in respect of Gordon Sprat, but we can certainly double check on that.
And then, sorry, the second part of my question was if they were to move and we made that decision today, what sort of, you know, what sort of timeframe are we looking at if, you know, let's say it's the PEI land?
It's really a question of budget availability. At the moment, there's an allocation of funding for land and facilities in the eastern corridor, which doesn't kick in until financial year 31. So if you were to look to do something sooner, then there would need to be some reconfiguration, reprioritisation across that broader sports facilities programme of work, which I'm assuming would probably best be taken in that context over the next year or two. In terms of the feasibility of accessing and developing that PEI land, we're just doing some additional work at the moment, but our desktop understanding is that it's relatively easy to get in there and get stuff done.
Councillor Crowther?
If there's not the demand right now for the need for more space for rugby and there's the implications for touch, in the summertime, would potentially that space be well utilised by cricket or other summer sports? Or would there be, I guess, a maintenance operational cost which doesn't actually fulfil a need in summer if the rugby and touch relocated?
I don't think we quite know the answer to that question at that level of detail yet. I think there's more work for us to do to refine who would use, who would best use those spaces and when, whether it's the new PEI land or on those number one and two fields in particular at Gordon Sprat. And that's why in the report we've kind of said, yes, look, we know that there's an overused space at Gordon Sprat and we know that there's emerging additional demand that we want to be able to meet, but there's more work to do to just refine exactly who would best use those individual spaces and when. And then obviously to build and configure those spaces appropriately, you know, do you put cricket wickets in or do you not, et cetera?
All right, so is there any, yeah, councillor Roseboom?
No, I definitely support the addition of sports fields to the PEI land, how we do it and when we do it. But I'd like to work closer with not just the rugby club or the touch club, but all other clubs that need more space. I'm very keen if we do something like this, it's a multi-sport event space and we fit in playgrounds for kids and walking tracks and bike tracks and even skate park, whatever, but it becomes a multi-sport area because given the drawings that we've seen for the development that's planned in that area, we're going to need substantially more green space than what's available at PEI to meet the demand of that community. And personally, the sooner we start planning ahead for this kind of sporting increase, the sooner we're going to meet the demand that was coming our way. And we've got a club that's quite happy to lead this and drive this and I suggest we use them as a vehicle to progress this.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, is there any other questions before we can have a little discussion? So, look, I think as part of, you know, this new council, we've spoken about it, delivering value for money. You know, the great thing about something like this and a rugby club is generally, you know, they have a lot of builders and electricians and plumbers and people that are willing to get out there and get their hands dirty and actually, you know, help out. So, you know, I think, again, the challenge is let's go old school and, you know, let's look at a partnership where, you know, we can actually deliver these things. We might be able to deliver a clubhouse for three or 400 grand, not the 1.2 million we think we can, because, you know, we'll have suppliers that have fondness to the rugby club and, you know, are prepared to build a, you know, a facility that works for everyone. And, you know, I think that's the challenge here is, yes, let's support this, but let's see if we can get our people to come and contribute. And it's a win-win because it costs us less. Rugby get the facilities they want and they contribute to building, you know, their own destiny. So, you know, I think there's a couple here which I will say very similar things, but, you know, that is very much, you know, I think the challenge here is, this is a way we can get more for less because clearly as council, we can't do any of this at an economical cost by ourselves. So let's partner with these people and, you know, get a good result for everyone. So I think, again, this is not a specific request for money, noting that there is some budget for Gordon Sprat to build some more facilities. So there is potentially some budget there, but I'll put this to the council. I'm happy to move this one. Oh, sorry, you want to have some more discussion? Oh, sorry, we haven't discussed the second part, have we?
No.
Yeah, sorry, that's, before we move that, we will discuss the second part. So, well, I think, I think that's, we acknowledge their interest in relocating to a future active reserve. I don't think we're committing ourselves to... Yeah, well, sorry, we might just need to, but that's the relocatable, I think. So that, yeah, I think, can I just ask for clarification? You would say that that is around the relocatable clubroom facility to deliver the proposed new facilities using...
Yeah, that was our meeting.
Yeah. Are people comfortable with that? So there's existing budgets at Gordon Sprat to build, like we, I think, is it talked about there? There's two... Well, it's the part of a capital programme, there's budgets in there, so...
It does raise the question, if we've got capital projects that have ability to build this, what else is in our capital projects that we don't know that are able to build other stuff? So it just, it makes me a little bit nervous to say, we're hearing that staff have got time to do feasibilities and that we've got existing budgets that weren't purposely for this, but...
Well, no, they are purposely for this.
For this building?
Well, yeah, we've had that workshop around, there's two, or there's two buildings proposed.
So the workshop didn't approve it, though?
No.
Yeah. So this is, you're doing more than we've done in the previous that we were agreeing in principle. Are you seeking to actually approve this budget?
No.
If I, it's, perhaps my team will correct me, but it's not as though we've got a slush fund and there's some money in there that we can just build a new facility. This was part of the planned, the planned upgrade that we've spoken about anyway. Yes?
Yes, so it's what we presented at the workshop around, there was a budget there for one pavilion, but we've heard the messaging around more for less, so we went and worked with, we went away and looked at how we could do two buildings for the price of one. So within the whole budget that's available for Gordon Sprat, we can do the two buildings and the car park and the storage and everything that needs to happen within that master plan. So we've done more within the budget that we already had, but taking a point that it's still to be approved through annual plan.
Yeah, councillor Morris.
Thank you. We closing off the avenue for the club and clubs in similar situations to apply for external funding? We're not, no?
No, so the intention is as well to get over time through this, a base build that we would say to the club, this is what council will pay for, anything on top of that is would be up to the club to fundraise, but absolutely also work with them to look at whether there's external funding and as per what the mayor has said, really keen to look at how they might be able to help with fit out or following things and how we can do it in partnership to make it as cost effective as possible.
Is there any other questions? There's no other questions, I'm happy to move. Councillor Morris will second. I ask all those in favour? Those against? That is carried, thank you. So we'll now just have a 15-minute break, we'll come back at 3.30 to continue on. So we'll now just have a fifteen minute break, we'll come back at three thirty to continue on.